Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At regular meetings, the City Council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packages are available on the City of Pasco website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. Please note that the City Council meetings continue to be held remotely and may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting is being also televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and also streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Through Proclamation Number 20-28, Governor Inslee extended the directive making temporary changes to the Open Public Meetings Act. These virtual meetings will continue until the OPMA restrictions are lifted, and hopefully soon. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and other questions for items not on the agenda by contacting the city manager or city clerk or using the feedback form on the city's website. And with that, some more housekeeping, we have the masks, we have the sanitizers for us to use, everything's been sanitized, and keeping our social distancing in place, and looking forward to some more information tonight on where things are happening to hopefully bring services to the Tri-City area on vaccinations and other things. Hopefully, we'll talk about that a little bit later. So with that, we will go to a roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Present.
Councilmember Maloney.
Present.
Councilmember Milne.
Present.
Councilmember Roach.
Present.
Councilmember Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present. Thank you very much. Shall we stand for the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you for that. Next, we will, we have a consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members or the public, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. First item on the consent agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes, to approve the minutes of the Pasco City Council remotely meeting held on January 4th, 2021, and remote workshop held on January 11th, 2021. Item B for bills and communications, to approve claims in the total amount of $3,710,402.98, and to approve bad debt write-off for utility billing, ambulance, cemetery, general accounts, miscellaneous accounts, and municipal court accounts receivable in the total amount of $124,644.22 for November 2020, and $179,306.99 for December 2020, and of that amount authorized zero to be turned over for collections. Item C, the Ordinance Code Amendment Waterfront Development District, to adopt ordinance number 4514, creating Chapter 25.127 of the Pasco Municipal Code, Waterfront Development District, and further authorize publication by summary only. Item D, the Ordinance 2018 International and State Code Updates, to adopt ordinance number 4515, amending Section 3.35.030, building permit fees, and Title 16, buildings and construction of the Pasco Municipal Code relating to updates to the Washington State Building Code, and further authorize publication by summary only. Item E, to approve resolution number 4026, authorizing the city manager to sign and execute the Inter-Local Cooperative Agreement for Administration and Funding of Quad-City Water Right Mitigation Model and Operating Procedure. Item F, the Resolution for the Inter-Local Agreement with Franklin Conservation District for Municipal Water Rights, and that's to approve resolution number 4027, authorizing the city manager to sign and execute the Inter-Local Cooperative Agreement pursuant to the Inter-Local Cooperation Agreement Act, RCW 39.34, for municipal water rights with the Franklin County Conservation District. Item G, the Resolution Approving New Master Services Agreement with Pamentis Corporation, and that's to adopt resolution number 4028, approving the sole source worksheet and a new master services agreement with Pamentis Corporation for billing services, and further authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Item H, Purchase and Sale Agreement, AutoZone/FireStation 87, to approve resolution number 4030, authorizing the purchase of 2.1 acres in the northeast section of the city for location of future fire station number 87, and further authorize the city manager to execute the Purchase/Sell Agreement with AutoZone Parts Incorporated. And that's the last of our consent agenda. If there's no one that has any objections or does not want to move anything, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, before we do, so I don't necessarily want to move anything. Last week, we spoke about the waterfront development, item C, Charlie. I did express some concern about potential competing businesses with downtown. I'm going to take a slightly different approach to that tonight. Just I want to say to council and city staff, as we continue to invest money in downtown, let's be extremely deliberate about ordinances that we're passing for allowable uses, signage, and other investments through the DPDA and the city funds and other partnership agreements to ensure that we beautify our downtown to make it on par with that same type of development that we're going to see. So rather than expressing the same concern, I think we can bolster one part of town by building up another simultaneously and build up downtown. And I think there are a lot of ideas we've kicked around as a council. So maybe let's put some extra effort and elbow grease into downtown with, again, ordinances, signage, things, things we've kicked around but really haven't fully moved on. That's all I want to say there. I appreciate this council and thinking through that.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. And we will take that into consideration, but at this time, as you've indicated, you would not want to move anything, but take that comment into consideration. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Any other comments on the consent agenda? If not, Mayor Protem Barajas.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
There's been a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. Do I hear a second?
This is Councilmember Roach. I'll second it.
It's been seconded by Councilmember Roach. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Serrano?
Yes.
Alvarado?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
Milne?
Yes.
Roach?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Barajas?
Yes.
And Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Alright, thank you. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have proclamations and acknowledgements, and tonight, we have a proclamation that I would like to read and share. It's Community Risk Reduction Week. Before I read this, City Manager Zabel, do you have a comment, or does somebody else have a comment on this?
You know, I'll kick it off, and I know that Chief Gear may want to have a couple of comments as well, but the community risk reduction program in Pasco is something that just a handful of years back was very much a part-time effort. And the prior council and this council as well has seen the benefit of that. We have really made that program much more robust over the last few years. Ben Shear, who many of you know, he's our Community Risk Reduction Officer, and Ben has done a fantastic job out in the community in marshaling not only just his resources, but leveraging a lot of resources too, within the department and with a number of our partner agencies that have really been to the benefit of our community. You know, I sent a note to Ben the other day. I can literally talk about one issue, and there's dozens of them, but I can talk about one where he literally saved a person's life by getting this very vulnerable person out of an extremely bad living environment. And you know, we're talking mold and things like that, not abuse, but just a really bad environment and into much better housing and a much safer living style. And that's the kind of the stuff that having someone trained out there in the community looking for that. And we're talking about changing batteries and everything from changing batteries and fire alarms or smoke alarms. You know, after you get to be a certain age, and I guess I'm that age, so I can talk about it. Maybe some of you can't, but for whatever reason, paramedics don't want you climbing ladders once you get to be a certain age. And so we have a great program that's really, I think, we have accidents that probably didn't happen as a result of this program as well. So it's preventative, it's about reducing risk in the community. And as I said, the prior council kind of started it, and this council's really kind of gone in with gusto in making this a stronger program over the last couple of budget cycles. And with that, I would invite the chief if he wants to chime in, if you feel indulgent.
Yep. Thank you, City Manager Zabel. Chief Gear, are you on the line?
I am, Mayor. Thank you very much. You know, I can't say enough. Ben, when I first started, Ben came and talked to me about a program like this, and we need to do something like this. So I guess he's ended up with what he asked for. It's kind of be careful what you ask for. But he is truly the face of the Pasco Fire Department and has done amazing things in the community to try and pull together our different stakeholders and help a lot of at-risk and very vulnerable population. And we know that that work that he's done, it helps us manage our call volume and our resource allocation. So it's, you know, again, I just can't thank him enough for what he's done. I believe he might have even a little video to show you that's truly an example of the work that he's done in preventing a large fire. So with that, Ben, I'll turn it over to you, bud. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council. Appreciate you guys entertaining this proclamation for us. So as everybody has already accurately stated, community risk reduction really is about the community partnerships. It's not just, you know, one issue. It's not just education. It's not just schoolchildren. It really is every aspect and every community member we have. So this quick little video is a fire call from La Pazada. Many of you are aware of their business there downtown, housing migrant workers and low-income people. And they did a really good job, and I wanted to share this video because this is an amazing job. Our engineering, public works, or sorry, our code enforcement department has worked with them to make sure over the years that the building meets code and has worked with them also to make sure the employees there are well-trained in what to do in case of an emergency. So you'll have to excuse the grainy video here, but this is actually from their in-house closed caption system. And I don't know if I can play this, John, or if you need to, but go ahead and play. So we got called for a structure fire at La Pazada a couple of weeks ago. This came in as a commercial structure fire, so we had responses from Richland, Kennewick, Benton County, Franklin County, wall 005, coming in to help, because this is a major site structure. The employee on the site recognized, saw what was happening, and this was actually a light fixture in the ceiling. The ballast was melting, and she saw that on the closed caption video. Immediately, you can't see her in the background there, but she actually runs and grabs the fire extinguisher. And not only does she grab the fire extinguisher, but she actually has understood how to use it. And you'll see her deploy this fire extinguisher as she sends the other employee off to make sure that the tenants are leaving the building as according to plan. So she quickly knocks down the fire, and she evacuates the room here in a second. Realizing that it's a light fixture in the ceiling, she realizes that fire is going to continue if she doesn't do something about it. So you'll see her go back out into the hallway here in a second and actually turn the breakers off to the kitchen area where this fire was. So amazing education on all the part of the employees. Everybody did exactly what they were supposed to do, from alerting the occupants, making sure the occupants evacuated correctly. And then she even met the fire crews out on the front walk as we pulled up to alert us what the actual issue was. So we were able to, all of our mutual aid resources that were coming in, we were able to get them slowed down and let them know that they needed to continue in to assist us. So if this had happened at another time, another building in Pasco, without all the correct engineering in place, which today's E for community risk reduction is engineering. Each day, there's a different E. So this building had all the great engineering in place and all the great education in place to make a safe thing for our citizens. So we're actually honoring La Pazada tonight as well, along with this proclamation for CRR Week. And again, I thank the City Council for entertaining us on this proclamation.
Mr. Shear, thank you very much for that. Really appreciate it. And let this be a reminder for the whole community that when our staff goes out to do inspections and make sure our fire extinguishers are up and keeping this community safe, you know, sometimes it gets a little frustrating and the little things kind of could be annoying, but those are the things that help save our buildings, our infrastructure, and most important, our lives. So, Mr. Shear, I will forever be grateful as well. As I went to my folks' home, who are elderly, and saw a couple of firefighters replacing batteries, I got to tell you, that was a very impactful moment because I just knew right there, if most people are like my father and think they're not, you know, think they're still capable of going up ladders when they're really not, I know it's saving lives, and I know that falls are probably one of the most critical ways and that the elderly, some of the safety hazards that they risk in their homes. And I just couldn't thank you enough for all you do for our community, the firefighters of Pasco, and the services that are provided with Community Risk Reduction Week. And with that, and I'll give the council a moment to say anything, some words if they'd like, but I would like to read this proclamation. Whereas Pasco Fire Department responded to 30 structure fires in 2020, and whereas the Fire Department responds to a growing number of medical calls for services surpassing 80% of total call volume, and whereas the community risk reduction is a data-informed process to identify and prioritize local risks, followed by integrated and strategic investment of resources to reduce their occurrence and impact, and whereas the value of community support from local, state, and national partners to address community risk is recognized to meet the demands on the fire service, and whereas the goal of the community risk reduction is to reduce the occurrence and impact of emergency events for both community members and emergency responders through deliberate action in the areas of the five Es of education, which are engineering, enforcement, emergency response, and economic incentive. And whereas most fire-related and many medical calls for services are preventable with the five Es performed as part of an integrated community risk reduction program, and whereas Monday, January 18th, 2021, is Martin Luther King's Day and is nationally recognized as a national day of service and the opportunity for communities to reduce the risk of their community through a series of educational and other programs. Now therefore, I saw Martinez, Mayor of the City of Pasco, Washington, do hereby proclaim January 18th through the 24th as Community Risk Reduction Week. So with that, again, we thank you very much, and I'd like to open up this opportunity for the council if they wanted to share any comments.
Mayor, this is Blanche, Mayor Protem Barajas.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor Protem.
If I may, Ben, I've worked with Ben in several coalitions. We, I'm sure he's tired of seeing me. But his role is extremely important. He does the education piece well within the community, within the community-based organizations that he's involved in with all the partners. I just want to commend you for your hard work and the team, Fire Department, everyone that is in your department. Kudos to everyone. Thank you so much for the hard work, and stay safe out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Is Councilmember Maloney?
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, Mayor Protem said it very well. I mean, and especially when we, when, I think one of the keys is when the chief was saying that, Ben, you're the face of the Fire Department. I think that is absolutely the case. I can't seem to go outside without seeing either your vehicle or your person out there helping the community, interacting. And this isn't like all you do. You also do other duties as well, and that to me is absolutely flabbergasting how you're able to stay on top of so much and provide such a benefit to the community. That short video and helping us talk through that incident at La Pazada. I mean, I walked past that building often. I've been past it, gosh, a couple of times this last month. I mean, when you talk about how packed our downtown is, the sort of impact it can have to the community, I mean, and not to mention the loss of life, I mean, what a tragedy prevented. And that's really what my big takeaway from the community risk reduction is, is it's about preventing the tragedy. And that, I just can't say enough about how impressed I am with how far we've come and, you know, how important and impactful it really has been to the community. It's quiet and impactful. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anyone else?
Yeah, if I may, I'd just like to offer, we should have our own version of Minshew Mania with Ben Shear's mustache. Next time we present the proclamation, please.
Thanks, Councilmembers.
I'll get my razor right now.
Well, anyone else? I'm sure all the council members feel the same way. So once again, I just want to thank you very much and appreciate all you do and just continue the good work, and the success comes in seeing the smiles and the lives saved from our community members. So just keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you again very much. Let this be a team.
Alright. One of the, let's see here. Next on the agenda, well, I think this could be acknowledgement. I'd like to take this time, City Manager Dave Zabel, to just acknowledge that yesterday was Martin Luther King Day. And I just wanted to share a little bit about the importance of what that day brings, and it was really nice to see in the Tri-City Herald, the people who were acknowledged for being great representatives of the African-American community. I just want you to know how important each and every person in the community is, but also our African-American community, who is a vital part of who Pasco is and what all the things that have been done for Pasco and all the events that was put on by the African-American community. I mean, I just can't say enough good things and how special they are. And they've always been a vital part in my life. Somehow or another, they always come in, stepping up to the plate and trying to do the best they can to represent what Martin Luther King really fought for all the years that he was here. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, and I don't know if there's anybody else, any other council members that would like to give a comment at this time? And if not, that's okay. I just wanted to acknowledge that yesterday was a very important day and he will always be remembered as a great achiever and a very important man in U.S. history. So thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to the next item or next on our agenda, and that is reports from committee and/or officers. Is there anybody that would like to share an event or any comments tonight?
Is Councilmember Maloney?
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Milne and I attended a public facility district meeting this afternoon. They're still considering and really going through the full effort of trying to understand what a potential aquatic facility could look like for Pasco. And one thing that, you know, I can be really pleased to say is that every single member has been very clear that until, they're very confident that the numbers make sense and pencil out and with, that they find acceptable, they are disinterested in even putting it to the council. So we know they're doing their due diligence, and hopefully we'll see some more coming up soon. But I have faith that they will at least put together, that they will certainly put together the full package before bringing it to council to consider taking any further steps. So pretty excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mayor, this is Councilmember Milne.
Yes, Councilmember Milne.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up that the multi-club, the Rotary Multi-Club, that we did decide to back the Klima because of the sister city with the City of Pasco. And so they are going to do a global grant with the help of Carholder and then of course Sunrise Rotary. And basically, it's for the rehabilitation center there in Klima and raising $30,000. So a lot of it had to do with, of course, my work on this as well, but the sister city program to do other things so we could actually help out our brothers down south. And then the other thing, I don't know if this is the moment to say it, but I just also wanted to give a big shout out to the military people and my daughter, Kristi Milne, went to the Air Force last night. I took her up there. And I can just say, as a parent, it's extremely hard to have your kid go off and serve our nation. It's hard letting your kid go, and I just want to big shout out that I really understand parents that have their kids go in the military, how difficult it is, and just very moving, put it that way. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Milne. That's very honorable. Anybody else?
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, last week, I attended the Ben Franklin Transit Board Meeting, and some regular business, but notable, we did have nine resolutions acknowledging the work of nine longtime BFT workers who were retiring. And so we certainly want to acknowledge that. Over like hundreds of years of experience, and so definitely always hard to fill in the shoes of folks who are retiring. But yeah, just wanted to say that. Ben Franklin's still going strong despite all the setbacks, but looking forward to being able to ride the bus to council meetings.
Alright. Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. If there's nothing else, I would just report very quickly. I attended a meeting for all the mayors in what we call our South Central Region to discuss issues and where we sit on the Healthy Washington Program. And needless to say, there was a lot of interesting, or not interesting, but just a very emotional conversation going on on where we would like to go as a region. But most importantly, and I think the bottom line is, we are continuing to make strides and trying to work with our health districts and with our governors and governor representatives to try to move forward and see how we can advance and beat this pandemic that we're going through. And miscellaneous items, we'll talk a little bit more about. Maybe Chief Gear can share some things that have been going on that he has more information on. So again, just continuing to work with the other elected officials and mayors throughout the Tri-Cities and that region. And also very important that we all work together to try to get through this and because each one of our cities affects our whole region. So we're working very hard to try to make it right for everybody. Okay, so with that, we'll move along to item number seven, hearings and council actions on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto, none listed, and ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. Tonight, we'll talk about and vote on a resolution project acceptance on Pearl Street Lift Station. Director Wardley, are you on the line tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I have the privilege of turning this over to our CIP manager, Maria Sara, to talk about the approval of this project. With that, Maria?
Good evening, Maria.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. So we are bringing to you tonight the acceptance resolution for the Pearl Street Lift Station replacement. And we have a presentation to show you what the project consisted of and what the cost of the construction contract was and change orders and some pictures of the completed project. The Pearl Street Lift Station was an existing lift station the city had built in 1958. The Pearl Street Lift Station was an existing lift station the city had built in 1958. This lift station was, um, accessed through a manual and required, uh, confined entry processes. It was located in Pearl Street between Fourteenth Avenue and Fifteenth Avenue. And what you're seeing in the presentation right now is the general plan view of what the project consisted of. It was the abandonment of the existing lift station and construction of a brand new lift station, also underground, but with much more accessible access and controls, um, located in the alley just south of its original, uh, location. With that, uh, we can advance this slide, please. Okay, this is the before picture. Um, we are on Pearl Street looking onto Fourteenth Avenue. And you can barely see it, there is just some manhole lifts. And you can see the alley where it's, uh, the lift station was relocated into. So that before, let's move on to the next slide to see the during construction. Okay, so this is the work that happened on Pearl Street and on the alley to the south. Uh, you can see the new access area with concrete and some of the connections to, um, the old, uh, forest name. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, and this is our final project pictures. On one side you are seeing the alley and actually from this view, you can almost see where the old lift station was located on, um, on the street across, across the street. We're looking onto Pearl right here. And you can see the access area with the hatch and, uh, some water and some boilers to prevent them from getting hit. And then on the other picture, you're seeing all the controls that are located above ground. And this is all the programming, SCADA that happens with the lift station so that it's all remotely connected and has alarms and other things that control levels in the wet well. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so the project was awarded to CME Trenching, um, which is a contractor located in Pasco, Washington. And, uh, the contract amount, which was a word, and I haven't written them, so just looking at this. Um, was 982,721 dollars with 40 cents. There was one change order through, uh, the project. There was $200, almost, almost $201. And so the new total contract cost was, uh, 982,922 and 31 cents. The total project cost was above $100. Okay, and I think that is the end of my presentation and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, um, thank you, Maria. Appreciate that report. Uh, it's always nice to see a local, uh, a local business, uh, be awarded a job and doing such a great job. Um, so, yeah, it's very, very, very good to see that. Any council members have any questions or comments?
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, Councilmember Alvarado.
Yeah, uh, definitely great to see, uh, that point 002, uh, amount in the change order. That's, uh, fantastic. Um, and I'm wondering, I know that, you know, we always get bids and there's change orders and with the more complex projects, there's, there's more change orders. But I'm wondering if we have any kind of mechanism or could have any kind of mechanism to, uh, reward previous, um, contractors who stayed within, uh, a margin of, 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 um, changes and, you know, do well. I know it's, a lot of times we, we bid out work and then with the change orders, it's, it's as much as the other bids. And so I'm just wondering if there's anything like that or could we do anything like that?
That's a great question, Councilmember Alvarado. A lot of times unless it is written in the construction contract, we really don't have a way to reward contractors in situations like this. Part of the reason for that is that a lot of times the ability or inability for change orders is based on how well the engineering documents are prepared, how solid, how tight the bid packages are. And what this project shows us is that we had a very good design, uh, for this project. We had a very good bid package put together and we had a very good contractor who was willing to work with the city. And even as changes go through the construction process, sometimes they said, that's okay, we'll cover it. And other times they say, well, that's above what we bid, so we need a change order for that. So it, it just really depends on the project. I think one of the things that Pasco has going for it is we're getting a reputation now for being very fair on our construction projects. We treat our contractors well, we want them to succeed. And so bidders, our contractors are looking to bid Pasco projects because they know that we're gonna be easy and good to work with and we're gonna be fair and reasonable. So I would love to be able to reward them. But, uh, right now there really isn't, uh, a method to do that unless we build it into the, uh, contract itself.
Uh, yeah, thank you for, for that. And, uh, certainly did, did not mean any kind of, uh, financial reward. Uh, I meant more of being able to, uh, perhaps ha- have on our records of, uh, you know, which contractors are, are, are doing a really good job and staying within, within the scope and have that as consideration for future projects. And I don't know if that's, uh, how you would do that. But in any case, uh, thank you for that information and thank you for, uh, just, uh, letting us know, uh, how, how, um, the city is progressing in, in, in our ability to put these contracts together.
All right, thank you. If, uh, there's no other comments, then I would entertain a motion, Mayor Protem.
I apologize for that, I was on the wrong page. And here we are. I move to approve resolution number 4029, accepting work performed by CND Trenching LLC under contract for the Pearl Street Lift Station project.
All right, there's a motion, do I hear a second?
Councilmember Maloney, I'll second that.
It's seconded by Councilmember Maloney. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Compose same sign and pass it unanimously. Thank you. Next we go to, uh, item number nine, unfinished business. Tonight we'll be talking about, uh, the performance of the city, of the city manager. Uh, Dave, do you want to start off with that or do you just want to, me go ahead and?
Mayor, why don't you go ahead and check it out?
All right.
It's, it's a bit awkward.
Yes. So tonight, um, uh, we will be discussing, um, an opportunity for, for us to, uh, to kind of evaluate, not tonight, but we've already been through an evaluation that we've gone through, uh, through, uh, Kenbrell. And, um, tonight I want to open up this, uh, this item of discussions for the council to, to see how and if and what, what the thought is in perhaps compensating the city manager. Take it into thought that last year, um, he wasn't provided, uh, he was comfortable and we come to agreement that at that time, um, everything was good the way it was. But, um, he was generous and humble enough to, to accept, um, and, and not receive anything last year. Uh, and he's, our city manager has, has been nothing but done great things for our city and, uh, has stepped up to the plate and performed in a, what I would say an exceptional, uh, exceptionally well and has been, uh, meeting all his obligations. And we all know, uh, that he is staffed up, our staff, uh, and a good staff, uh, that has brought potential longevity, to a workforce that is doing wonderful for us. And not to mention, uh, this pandemic, uh, that has come to, uh, just make things, uh, very difficult for our city. But yet he stepped up to the plate to take care of us in these situations that we're in and moving forward. But, uh, with that, I just want to open up a conversation to see if anybody on the council would like to, uh, to have any comments and, and open up this discussion for, uh, the appraisal process and his evaluation and, and what your thoughts are, uh, for this topic. Who would like to begin?
This is Councilmember Maloney, I'll, I can kick that off, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Go ahead.
Yeah, so over the last few years working with, uh, Mr. Zabel, um, you know, one of the constant themes that I, I, that I think of and I, I hear from, from the community at large, our economic development groups, even our developers, is, is how, um, how he, he follows through. He, he, he has those conversations and he's willing to talk and, and hear out anybody, no matter what their position is on something. And so, you know, especially, that's been especially hard, I think, on all of us over this last year, uh, during the pandemic to, to be able to reach out. And I think, uh, Mr. Zabel has, has been able to put in that additional effort that's required, um, to make that happen, even during these tough times. And we, we, when we were having, um, you know, um, a protest in our city from, with the Black Lives Matter groups, you know, Mr. Zabel was able, was able to help facilitate, sit down with, um, some of us council members and, and activists in our community to hear what they had to say, the Latino communities, with, with, with everyone who has an opportunity and who wants to, wants to have a, wants to have a voice. And I think that when you look at how, how well the city has been able to, to manage through this last year especially, I think it's, it's, I'd be hard pressed to say that we, we, um, you know, we could ask more of, of Mr. Zabel than, than he's given us. It really has been above and beyond. And, and I think the, the other spot that I, I'd really like to focus on is, is the simple fact that, um, he's been pretty willing to listen and to, to learn and continue growing. As many years of experience as he has in, um, in leadership in municipal government, he's still willing to learn, to learn and listen and, and, and be able to figure out a different approach to try to make, um, work for the community as best as possible. So I think there's, there's, there's a lot to be said for that as well. So I think in light of the fact that, um, as you said, Mr. Mayor, that, um, um, Mr. Zabel was not granted any sort of, uh, raise last year. Uh, I think, I think, you know, as something, you know, uh, a salary adjustment in the, around 3%, I think would make a lot of sense. I think if you were to talk to most employees of, of our company, um, seeing an average of one and a half percent, uh, raise over two years would be, uh, I, I'm not sure a lot of us would be, uh, terribly thrilled with that number. So I think that that is a, as a fair number, uh, given our current economic climate and current, current issues. And especially in light of his, his excellent performance in a number of things. So I guess that's, that's my piece and I welcome other comments by the council to, others to border up, oppose my thoughts there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Councilman Milne.
Yes, good.
I just wanted to say that, uh, Councilman Maloney said it very eloquently and very precise. I was also thinking around the 3% range as well. I know it's, it is challenging times, uh, kind of a bad time because of the economic state that a lot of companies are going through. But, uh, I will say Mr. Zabel's performance and his character and his willingness to work hard have been extraordinary in my book. I wish, I wish we had a lot more money to give him, but I do really appreciate his hard work and everything that he's done for the city. And, uh, I definitely, uh, definitely feel that he needs, uh, a raise and, uh, do the best that we can. And so that's, I would also, uh, echo, uh, Mr. Maloney's, uh, a number.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anyone else?
Sure, I'll, I'll take a quick minute and just say that, uh, I've appreciated my time with Dave. I mean, he is, if, if anything, he's reachable. And I mean that not only just by picking up the phone and calling him, but if I need something to vent or throw mud at the wall and see what sticks, I can reach out to him and he'll actually help me fish through the idea, work through the concept and help me to reach, uh, kind of a conclusion that's not just a half-baked Serrano idea because I got plenty of those floating around. So I appreciate his level-headedness and just willingness to talk me through issues. So I, I absolutely welcome him to continually return to the city of Pasco, uh, as our single council employee. And I do echo the thought of a 3% raise. He's definitely earned it and I think he's earned not only council, but the residents', uh, trust. So thank you, Dave, for your service.
Thank you, Councilmember Shon. Go ahead, Councilmember Alvarado, go ahead.
Sir, my, my, Mr. Mayor, uh, yeah, this is Councilmember Alvarado. And, uh, yeah, I would certainly echo that. I, I think, uh, you know, I'm taking, uh, uh, I'm, I'm running out through my MPA program and I just get, you know, pretty amazed in the level of, uh, uh, you know, just, uh, complexity that a city manager, uh, does. And so I, I, I don't know, I don't know if I ever be able to, um, manage at that level. But I, I very much appreciate just the, um, just the follow-through. And, uh, even though that there are many co- complex issues that, um, you know, the city has to deal with and the city manager has to do with, uh, I, I also see, uh, Dave, uh, taking time to, uh, look at, at, at the, at the small detail things and being able to talk with people and meet with people where he very well could, uh, and, and, um, you know, say, well, someone else will take care of that. Uh, I think Dave is, uh, willing to personally close the loop on the things he can. Um, and so I very much appreciate that. I also, uh, sense just a great, um, deal of balance, uh, from, uh, previous years. I was like, I don't know, I, I don't know if our, our city manager is gonna get sick. I feel like he's, uh, taking care of himself, uh, at least that's what I perceive. And so, yeah, I would echo that. Uh, definitely been a, a, a great experience, uh, for us in, in, um, in the council to be able to have a city manager that also helps us, uh, uh, deal through the difficult issues that, that we have as well. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Anyone else?
Say a few words.
Sure, go ahead, uh, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to say that I appreciate Dave's, uh, willingness to be, that concept of open door policy. I know I've reached out a couple of times and sometimes, uh, gone back and forth on emails super late. So I'm sorry if I'm keeping you awake. But, uh, one of the things that I've heard in the community is that you're very accessible and you're very quick to respond or research an issue. And, uh, the feedback that I've gotten is, is always positive in regards to your involvement and, um, directly with business owners or community members. Um, I appreciate that about you and I am also in support of the 3%. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Barajas. If there's no one else, then I will, uh, have a closing statement by, by sharing this with the community. As you hear these comments from our council members, you know, they're, they're being very truthful and honest in their, uh, in their experiences and, and seeing how the city manager runs the day-to-day operations of this business. And it's not that, it's not that, um, I just want to be clear that it's, it's not just that we enjoy, uh, the city manager and what he does, but, uh, we took a very serious approach in, uh, in evaluating our city manager. And we hired, uh, Dave Mercer from the Kimbrell Company to do an extensive evaluation, which, uh, took a lot of time, a lot of interviews with the council and, um, and just going over all the things that, that our city manager, Dave Zabel, does for our community. And he has consistently, uh, performed in, in just about every category. And those that, that perhaps, I mean, there's always room for improvement, but he's always striving to get that done for us. And so it's not, it's not just our opinions that we're going by, but it's a consolidated effort and an evaluation to make sure that we are administering and, um, and handling our, our taxpayers' money appropriately. And I, I just want to say, and I can tell you as mayor of, of Pasco, that we are getting our money's worth. Uh, we don't have just a city manager, an average city manager. We have a very seasoned city manager who's on top of his game. And, uh, and I'm very glad and I'm very happy that we're blessed. We've been blessed with great city managers, uh, and, and fortunately we've only had a couple that I can remember in my lifetime, but, um, because our previous manager was here for many, many years and did an excellent job. But, uh, but we don't have just a standard city manager. We have an exceptional and well-seasoned city manager. And, um, I'm only expecting maybe 10 more years from him. That was a joke. I, I'm not sure what he has planned, but, uh, I do know that, uh, it's been very humbling and, um, you know, the city manager deserves an, an exceptional raise. But, um, again, with all his humility, he comes to us and says he will be happy with whatever we decide. And, um, I think a 3% increase, um, in, in a span of two years, as Mr. Maloney indicated, is very appropriate and, uh, very more than well-deserved. And, uh, it would be nice to, to give more, but, uh, that's, uh, we've evaluated where he sits with his peers amongst other cities of this size. And, um, and, you know, he will be within range, um, from the middle to the top of where he belongs. But in my opinion, he belongs on the top. So with that, uh, I just wanted to, to be clear and, uh, and communicate that it, it's not just something we think. So with that, I just wanted to be clear and communicate that it's not just something we think, that we just, you know, did something very quickly, it was an extensive evaluation. And I think it's very noticeable of his efforts and what he's done for our community. So with that, I want to thank you all for your comments. Mayor Protem, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And we have a little amended motion in comparison to what we have on the agenda. And this is to reflect the agreement we just did. The motion reads, "I move to accept the final report by Kimbrel, Inc., reflecting the city council's corporate view of the city manager's performance and to award the city manager a performance-related salary increase of 3% effective the next full pay period."
Thank you, Mayor Protem Barajas. There's been a motion. Do I hear a second?
This is Councilmember Roach, and I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Roach. So we'd like to have a roll call for this vote, please.
Councilmember Roach?
Yes.
Councilmember Serrano?
Yes.
Councilmember Alvarado?
Yes.
Councilmember Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Milney?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Barajas?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes, passes unanimously, Mr. Manager City Zabel, City Manager Dave Zabel. I hope that this expression of this unanimous vote is an indication of appreciation of the hard work you're doing. You often remind me of a pastor of a church because I've seen it where you're on call 24/7, and it's not a 40-hour-week job, and you always rise to the call. And we appreciate all your efforts, appreciate the sacrifices you're making with your family. And we know that at this point in your career and your life, this is very important. And just want to tell you, we honestly, we truly appreciate all your efforts and what you've done for our community. And it will be remembered for a very long time. So thank you very much.
I appreciate that. Mayor, could I say a few words?
Sure, go ahead.
So, you know, counsel, I explained to the mayor earlier this evening before the meeting that I, the last piece of information kind of came together pretty late in the agenda process before our last meeting in December. And so I didn't want to rush that. And it was a huge meeting, we had a lot of stuff on there, and I didn't want this item to get lost in that meeting. The first meeting in January is when I intended on bringing this, your first regular meeting. And I wasn't able to do that because I could tell that was going to be a pretty long meeting. And I think we're all still trying to catch up on our sleep from that one. And so this is my first opportunity. I actually did not know that it was going to work out, that it was going to be the primary item on the agenda. I might have forced all of it because I gave you too much time to talk about this stuff tonight. It's a little embarrassing. But so I do want to express to counsel, and this goes to the public too. I appreciate the counsel, your comments and your sentiments that you expressed tonight. And I appreciate your willingness to take the time. And Mayor, you talked about it a few minutes ago, it was a considerable amount of time for Dave Mercer interviewing each of the council members and kind of synthesizing that. And then the executive session and pulling all that together. And surprisingly, and I can tell you this from experience, you know, this council has done this kind of effort on their evaluations for years prior to my time. Different city council members, different city manager at the time. And the result of that is a good communications, clear expectations, and the stability that comes with those things between a legislative body and the executive branch, the head of the executive branch. So it's an important step. And, you know, unfortunately and surprisingly, it's less common in practice than you'd expect among cities. So in my experience, this council is rare that they're committed to doing that. And I thank you for that, and I think the public benefits from it. Obviously, as many of you alluded to, the past year, we've seen some once-in-a-lifetime or once-in-a-career challenges in this council and the staff. And our community has rose to the challenge. We still have a long ways to go. But I have to say, the amount of progress, the county, excuse me, the city, the city staff, our public council, the amount of progress we were able to make together in the face of the unknown is, you know, when you stop and think about it, almost a year later now, it's actually pretty amazing. Still a long ways to go, but using one of the sayings of the day nowadays, we got this. We know a lot more than we did a year ago, and we're pretty well-practiced on facing the unknown. And there's a predictability in January of this year that wasn't there in March of last year. And we're on a pretty good track. We'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes under miscellaneous items. But I just want to say I'm very proud to serve as your city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Dave Zabel. Okay, now we can move on to new business unlisted. We have a miscellaneous discussion. I'll turn it over to you again, City Manager Dave Zabel.
Thank you, Mayor. And so as councils are aware, we have been looking at options. Obviously, you know, we saw the major announcement in yesterday's paper, and numbers have gotten emails from the governor's staff or through their office. And then a number of our key staff, in particular Chief Gier, has been working with officials at the state and local level on what's to come next. And I think all of us sort of have been waiting for vaccinations to start to open up, seeing that as maybe the quickest way to overall community health. I mean, certainly the masks and the social distancing and the other measures that we're taking have helped, and they probably staved off disaster. But now it's time to get us healthy and get our community open back up. And so we've taken that charge seriously. And I would ask the chief to come on and talk a little bit about what he's learned over the past few days, including over the weekend, as to what we can expect from the state level, how that plays out, and how we as the city, our organization, can help facilitate that effort. So with that, chief?
Thank you. Chief Gier?
All right, well, good evening again. I'd like to come on and be really convinced about what I know and give you lots of really great information. But I will be honest and say, the vaccine situation is still a little bit fluid. Maybe that'd be the term. Monday morning, it looked like we were going to partner with Lord's Hospital based on information that the hospitals have received on Sunday. And that changed considerably Monday afternoon when the governor announced that the mass vaccination site was going to be at the Benton Franklin Fairgrounds. We're still trying to really chase all this information down, to be honest with you. I can't give you a really good read on how we're going to do vaccines and do lots of vaccines. There have been a lot of opportunities for first responders to get vaccines and healthcare workers, and many of them have taken that opportunity. Pasco Fire has vaccinated probably close to 60 of our 88 total personnel. So I'm pretty happy with that number. But the community vaccination thing is going to be a work in the progress for the next few weeks. I don't honestly know right now. I'm sorry to say that. I know Mr. Zabel wanted me to come on tonight and give you a road path to recovery. But it seems to be a little bit in flux. Everyone was taken a little bit by surprise by the governor's press conference yesterday afternoon on how mass vaccinations are going to be handled in Wenatchee, Tri-Cities, Spokane, and Clark County. And we are waiting to get the rest of the information on that. Again, I'd like to give you more info, but if, maybe I could just answer questions if you have some.
Thank you, Chief Gier. Appreciate that information. I will also, well, I will also share that I actually called the Health District today. And for more information for the community, there's two sites that you could go to. And one of them is phasefinder.org. And then the other one is just the Health District website that they are continuously updating the information for those who are eligible to go get the vaccinations. Again, I think Chief Gier said how fluid it may be at this time. But that is the plan, is to have a mass vaccination site over at the fairgrounds. And I'm hoping that, that once that gets established, and the information that I received from Salvador Salazar, the representative of Inslee, within two to three weeks, once that site is open, I would like to continue efforts, Mr. Zabel, to see how or what we need to do to try to get our folks over to get vaccinated, the ones who have roadblocks in the way to get there, or, you know, transportation, whatever it is. I would like to see what efforts we can make if that really opens up. And if that's the case, how we can move forward to ensure that the majority of our folks that want to get vaccinated go and get vaccinated. So we'll be working on that, and we'll have more information to come on that as soon as we can get that going. Is there anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, I would just add that, you know, the chief and I had a discussion about this this morning. And obviously, the National Guard is going to be the primary on that site. We're going to help where we can. And what you talked about just a minute ago, our folks that may have obstacles getting over there or aren't able to travel over there, that's a piece that we're kind of trying to solve locally at our level and with some of our other partners in the community to try to make that happen. So I can't give you specifics on that now, simply just because we don't have them. But as you heard from the chief, we, I guess there's a dim light, but we don't know the exact path just yet. All right.
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, Councilmember Alvarado. Go ahead.
I know this is still new, and I'm sure these conversations are happening, but I would imagine that Benton Franklin Chancet would play a role in perhaps getting people there. Just curious if that's been the thought.
We don't know. Councilman Alvarado, nobody seems to, some of these things have not been fleshed out. And that's what we're trying to dig into over the next few days and figure out what those plans are. We know there are people in assisted living homes that may or may not have been vaccinated yet. We're still trying to get to the bottom of that. There's just a lot of unknowns about how many vaccines different facilities should order. We know there's about 26 facilities in the Tri-Cities that have been approved to give vaccines, but most of them don't have vaccines to pass out.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And I'm sure as more comes to light, I hope that that happens quickly, but thank you for your candor.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado.
This is Councilmember Roach, and I just wanted to make a comment and express a concern. So in my personal experience, my mom is a teacher in the Kennedy School District. And for the last couple of weeks, we have both been actively trying to get her vaccinated because she is in the high-risk category. And as you must know, KSD is going to bring back middle and high school. She teaches high school. So, you know, that's 100 kids a day that she's going to be exposed to. And that's, that's kind of a nerve-wracking situation for somebody who's in a high-risk group. So, you know, after calling the doctor, doctor saying that she's going to, you know, write a prescription, but they don't really know at which pharmacy will be able to get it first. And so it was just kind of like a holding pattern for the last couple of weeks. But, you know, there were vaccines at Tri-City Community Health, there were at Lord's, there were at Cadillac. And so it took a lot of calling around and kind of finding out, you know, who has it, who had some, and then distributed all of what they had and who's going to have some. And so I think that from my perspective, you know, at whatever point, and I'm sure that we, Chief Gier, this is going to happen, but just want to express the need for absolutely crystal-clear information to the public as to when and where and how, because I know that the people are really waiting on this.
There were, I don't know if the hundreds would be the right term, but many, many, many people showed up today at Benton Franklin Fairgrounds, at the Wenatchee Convention Center because they had been, they heard yesterday that the governor was opening vaccination sites there. And those sites are weeks from being open. So there's still a huge amount of confusion out there.
So perhaps, perhaps it goes on our website as soon as we find out? Or in all of our community websites? And would we still have a, I mean, do we still have like a public information officer helping with that kind of messaging?
It's been difficult to attend meetings with the vaccination team from the Health Department. I got my first invite today, and I got to attend a meeting with their vaccination group tomorrow. And that was actually passed to me from somebody else who happened to get it passed to them. So we're really trying to dig into this and get the best information we can, but it's, it's difficult.
Thank you, and I do appreciate that situation because we're all, we're all doing this together and trying to figure it out. So thanks for what, for the information you provided.
We have John Funfar. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, John Funfar Communications Program Manager. And to Councilmember Roach's question, yes, even today, the Health District, excuse me, Health District tweeted out and posted on their Facebook page that the site, as you heard from the chief, is nowhere near as ready to be open. So, yeah, shared that amongst in our social media channels, and we'll continue to share that news out of the Health District as we hopefully get closer to an actual vaccination site, so.
All right, thank you.
Just a quick question, chief. Is this something that, you know, we as a council can pressure the government, or, I mean, the governor for more help on? I mean, is there a particular loop in the chain that's just being missed? I mean, it sucks to hear that you have information going every which way. Are we helpless here, or can we do something?
Councilman, I'm still trying to figure that out. I thought we had a path over the weekend. Clearly, under the Public Health Emergency Declaration, vaccinations is a health agency responsibility. It's not like a fire or a flood or something that I have some jurisdiction on. So we were looking at a path to try and get that delegated down to emergency management and go after it the way we normally would in a regular catastrophic emergency in our community. I don't know if that's the right word, but that's kind of how I live. So, and then everything changed yesterday afternoon when suddenly Starbucks and other corporations were involved in this vaccination program. There was no mention of state emergency management or whether state health was passed. So everyone is, today, you know, I've had conversations with the local emergency management. We're all really confused how everything has changed and how this is going to roll out. And we're, nobody's getting any information. So I would love to be able to give you, this is not the kind of world that I live in. I live in the get there and figure it out and get stuff going world. And this is, it's been very difficult to try and figure out how this is going to roll out and what, even what the timing is, you know. We know that there's been no discussion with Benton County about use of the fairgrounds. There's no agreements in place. They were, the first they heard it was going to come, vaccination site was yesterday afternoon in the press conference. So things seem to be pretty fluid.
I appreciate that. I guess I was hoping you'd have some golden carrot for us to say, call, you know, call Sal with the governor's office or call the legislatures and put pressure. I mean, I highly doubt any of those would be beneficial, but if you think, I guess I'm extending my efforts, and I'm sure council is too. If you think we can be a solution rather than just stand idly by awaiting something, whatever you think. Stand idly by awaiting something, uh, whatever you think, help us to help you.
Well, we will, um, as we know more. I, I hope by the end of the week, we've got. Some more intel on what the timing's gonna be and what's gonna be and, and what the capacity of this site's gonna be. Uh, we're still in conversation with Lords about partnering with them between Lords and Pasco Fire, um, to take care of our community. Um, and so we're, we're gonna see what we can do. We have floated the idea of, of turning one or two lanes. At the test site into a vaccination site, a mini-site, not a, a mega or high throughput like the, the um. Fairground site is supposed to be, uh, and how we could do that, uh, so we're, we're trying to keep a lot of balls in the air and options open right now. But we, we need to get a lot more shots in the arm. This is our first chance to go after this epidemic. And we need to take advantage of that opportunity and go at it, even if it means that in some instances, we only get one vaccine into people's arms. And give them sixty to sixty-five percent immunity, that's better than none.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep us posted, I guess.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Serrano. And thank you, Chief Gear, for that information. I would just trust that, uh, uh, you know, for the community that's listening out there, uh. Keep your eyes and ears open, uh, go to our website and I'm sure our uh, communications director, uh, John Funfar will, will put whatever information. He can get on there as soon as possible. City Manager Zabel?
Thank you, Mayor, just, just one more comment and then I had a, I had one other item if.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, part of the reason to, for the discussion tonight was just to make council aware and the public aware that's listening. Of just how much influx this whole situation is. And the only thing we know for sure, we don't know how it's gonna happen quite yet, but the only thing we know for sure is Benton County, uh, fairgrounds. Appears to be, uh, going to be a testing site, as declared by the governor yesterday and uh. We will continue to, to work with whoever we have to, to learn more information on this and get that to council and out to the public, so. Uh, you basically know what, what we know. You have up-to-the-date, up-to-date information and anybody that's listened to this tonight has up-to-the-date information. From Chief Gear and uh, I can tell you, chief is, the chief is. Very committed on this and he is deep into it, so you, you basically know what he knows, so.
I- appreciate the efforts and the honesty from Chief Gear and, and just to be clear, uh, Mr. Zabel, it, it's the vaccination site, not, not just a.
Vaccination.
Testing site.
Oh, my apologies.
Vaccination site.
Vaccination site.
Just to be clear, alright.
One o- one other item, I, we, we've talked a little bit about, uh, the um, U G A and, and uh, city comprehensive plan. Uh, council's aware, there's been a couple of workshops, uh, uh, of the County Planning Commission. There's another one scheduled, the next one would be. March sixteenth and um, that'll be, I think, a public hearing. The planning commission is expected to take action and uh, provide a recommendation to commissioners at their March thirtieth meeting. And the commissioners will take it up on workshop on April thirteenth, that's the schedule now. Uh, public hearing on April twentieth and uh, expected to take formal action as early as April twenty-seventh. So that kinda gives you a little bit of an updated timeframe on uh, on our uh, U G A boundary issue, so. That's all I had this evening.
Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you for that information. Next, we're gonna move on, uh, to item number twelve, uh, executive session. We do have a need for an executive session tonight. The session is expected to last approximately fifteen minutes. No action will be taken during the executive session. Um, this executive session is to consider acquisition of real estate. And those attending, uh, the meeting will be City Manager Dave Zabel, Director Zat Ratkai, and is that it? Alright, and that's it. So what will happen, uh, at this point is we will, um. Convene to, uh, an executive session and then we will co- uh, go out of consecutive session after about fifteen minutes. And then come back to adjourn the regular meeting. So with that, thank you very much for uh, joining us up to this point. Uh, we're gonna go on to executive session now and we'll see you in just a bit. Thank you. Thank you. All right, welcome back, council. I would like to take this opportunity, City Manager Dave Zabel has one more discussion point.
Yes, council, before we forget, we, we, I did wanna alert you to the completion of Station eighty-three on Sandifer, just to the west of Road sixty-eight. The firefighters moved into the facility. Matter of fact, they spent their first night in there last night and are busy working bugs out. We're gonna do an official, we're in the process of scheduling with you an official ribbon-cutting ceremony, most likely gonna be virtual sometime in the next week or week to ten days. So you should expect to hear from April on that, but I did wanna make you aware of it. Normally would have liked to have done these, this before they even moved in and that move-in date kept moving around. We had, I think the first move-in date was December seventeenth and we're still done ahead of schedule. But it's been, the chief used the word flux. It's been a, a work that's been in a state of flux for three, four weeks and a lot of folks, folks working really hard to, to make this project happen and access, success. We're there now, but ribbon cutting's gonna be just a little bit after the fact, which, you know, isn't so bad either. We'll get, we'll get to see a few rigs parked outside, at least virtually, if, if not in person.
All right, thank you, Dave. All right, city council, thank you for joining us tonight and being a part of this meeting. With that, it is eight thirty-one and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.